This meeting to order. Tonight is a regular school board meeting of the Tri-City United School Board. Tonight is Monday, November 13th, 2018. It is 6:00 PM and we are low or 6:01 and it's located at the TCU High School Band Room. Roll call finds all present except for Krista Gettle and Kevin Huber are both absent. We have one addition to the agenda this evening and would be the addition of the High School Student Council Report and we'll add that under our administrative report. So next we'll move into our administrative report.
Wonderful, thank you. I'll hit just a few of the highlights, but please always remember as community members and board members that we always have our monthly administrative report from our school principals and also our directors. There's always thorough information here aligned with all four of our strategic directions and helps everyone to know the progress that's being made. A couple of highlights though that I'll hit. TCU Lonsdale is continuing their work with the Universal Design for Learning, which really is about a personalized learning format and something they've been doing some research with Minnesota State University Mankato. We're looking forward to hearing about what they learned from that to see what can support our entire district. I did conduct seven habits training. As you know, TCU Lonsdale included a leadership format about a year, two years ago. And as a part of the sustainability as a licensed seven habits trainer, I was able to do training with all of the new teachers. It was a really great day, really fun. I forgot how much I enjoy that. TCU Montgomery, lots of great things happening. They've really dug in on their what I need or their win time and have really moved into their five eight supports for students for an after-school program. One of the things in continuing our avid growth across our district within their last early out, the seventh and eighth grade teachers really dug in further on focus note-taking and having some consistency across. Last year as we started in the second half of the year, it was really more the avid site team that took on these parts. Now it's going into all core content areas, so continuing that spread towards school-wide. So that's really, really exciting. At TCU La Center, again, this is similar to cross the district but kind of highlighted here, but I do know that this is happening at every single one of our sites. We pulled out some Minnesota Comprehensive Assessment Benchmark Reports that allow us to go a little bit deeper into the results as to what benchmarks and strands of these standards we're doing really well in and what are the specific strands we are struggling within. And these really are at a site, a site level rather than a district. And so each of our sites has been doing some work with Mr. Flugum within our departments and also our classroom teachers to really dig into those benchmark data and they'll continue to work with those within our collaborative learning team structures. Our staff has been really receptive to that and excited to get a chance to look at some things in a different manner and get some new answers to new questions. At TCU High School, as I said, also doing some benchmark analysis. They've done the benchmark analysis within math and then it's science in the afternoon and then also they partnered up English in the morning and social studies in the afternoon as well. So really doing some deep work there. And they've started a global Golden Globe winners within our staff, something that we've done at other sites and now has expanded to our high school. And I see that Ms. Erin Winters is here tonight as the very first Golden Globe winner, if I can say that. But congratulations and thanks for all your work with homecoming and everything like that this fall. In our district business office, again, audit is always the name of the game when you're in the fall and so Jeanne has been still working really hard with Clifton, Larson, Allen to finalize that audit. It will be brought forward to the December 10th meeting, which is also the meeting where we'll have our truth in taxation at 6 o'clock. And then also the finance committee will be, will meeting to discuss the levy and other kinds of topics as well. I should say they met and we will be meeting again prior to this meeting. Jeanne and I did meet with our Baird representatives to kind of review levy details and tax implications. As you know, this will be the first year where the bond referendum impacts will show up on the property taxes. We do want to remind everyone that within that bond referendum communications, we were really clear within the Agland, the egg tax credit, that that was a tax credit that did start last year already in 18, for pay 18. And it will continue into 19, but it isn't another 40% thing comes off. That 40% came off in 18 as compared to 17 taxes. So as we were sharing what the bond tax impacts would be, because of the timing of when our communications came and the information we were able to garner from the counties, all of our communications did say, this would be the projection as compared to your 17 taxes. So was what we've done is we've gone in and taken a look at what our projection was back then and then what some realities have come about so far with what we know. And going honestly, what we're seeing within the home and even with the Agland and other areas is that our, the actual should come in slightly lower than what we projected back when we were preparing for bond referendum. That the key part here especially for Agland owners is to know your comparative on that 40% tax credit was compared to 17, it won't be another 40% reduction from 18. So I know that's going to be a little tricky for people, but important for us to really be that clear that everyone remembers that too. Great work though being done within the audit preparation and from there, of course, that will kick off then our budgeting for fiscal '20. Great stuff happening across the district. As you can see as well, tasty things from our food service. Amy Souter and our food service staff have once again been just doing a great job and also having a little fun around Halloween time. The culture within our kitchens has just really been a positive one this year and great teamwork happening. So really proud of our food service and Amy for her leadership. That is our report. Lots more there, so I encourage everyone to go and take a look.
All right, next is our High School Student Council Report. We have Brandon Balma and Ellie Singleton here.
Well, I'm Brandon Balma.
And I'm Ellie Singleton.
And we're here to represent student council and BPA if that is okay with you.
Yep.
Fabulous.
And first I would like to talk about what we've done so far this year as a student council. And kicking off the year, we started and we helped out with orientation. A few student council volunteers helped get those freshmen around the school, showed them where everything was at. Then in September, what did we do in September? A few things.
I don't remember. You do a lot.
A few meetings. October, October was our, oh, September. September, we had our ditch cleanup. We cleaned up the ditch right outside of the railroad on 13?
Sounds right.
I think 13. And it's about a two-mile stretch. We cleaned it. It's pretty nice. And then in October, we hosted a blood drive, collected 64 units of blood, so we're really proud of that.
Now we plan to do a teacher appreciation breakfast in November, this month. And then in December, I believe we plan to have a holiday party for our school to kick off the holidays.
And another thing that I just remembered, we met with administration regarding school passing time and backpacks, trying to eliminate the need for people to bring their backpacks to classes. And we came up with a resolution that we would be adding one minute to the passing times and taking a minute off of the first through fourth hours of the day and taking three minutes off of fifth and, or fifth, sixth, is it fifth and sixth or is it sixth and seventh?
I think it's sixth and seventh.
Sixth and seventh hour and adding five minutes on to our tight end time period for ACT prep and for teachers to get one-on-one time with students.
Yes.
That's what we've done this year for student council. And for BPA, I'm the president and Ellie is our communications officer. We've really just gotten started this year. We went to the Fall Leadership Conference. I ran for state office and I was not successful in obtaining a state officer position and Ellie served as a voting delegate. It was some really good experience for our chapter. We really got our name out there. And this week is our social media week, so our chapter is participating a lot of activities. Yesterday was Membership Monday. We all wore our conference t-shirts and then today was Tourist Tuesday. We all dressed up in some tourist gear, got a picture, really just to get our name out there for Tri-City United so we can get people asking, who is Tri-City United? And they're really a school that's coming up.
Trying to get small chapters to know him better. And now we're preparing all of our teams for region, helping out like freshmen and new incomers to get their events, some good quality events to get us to go to state, because it's better if you can bring a lot to get represented. Yep.
And that's it.
Thank you.
Well, thank you.
Thank you very, very much.
Kudos to you for running for office. That's a big step.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, next, I'll seek a motion to approve the agenda with the noted changes. I'll make a motion.
Second.
I have a motion by Ashley Receval, second by Dale Bus to approve the agenda with noted changes. All those in favor?
Aye.
Those opposed? Motion is passed. Read out one, two, three, four, five, zero. All right, under consent agenda, we have the approval in minutes of the October 10th, 2018 School Board Meeting and October 22nd, 2018 Special School Board Meeting. Under personnel, and I'm sorry if I mispronounce some of these names, so I'll do my best. Under new hires, we have Cindy Lethagee, a long-term sub-sixth grade teacher in Lee Center. Amy Pepping, a part-time kids' own supervisor. Sue Rutt, a part-time paraprofessional in Montgomery. Andrew Brown, a part-time custodian maintenance at the high school. Julie Trinka, paraprofessional in Lonsdale. Hunter Darius, eighteen, nineteen band, a drum corps volunteer. Under employment ending, Jennifer Friedrich, kids' own Lonsdale. Kayah McMillan, a C-Squad volleyball coach. Vanessa Lamplie, head volleyball coach. Under leave of absence, we have Erica Bezek, first grade teacher in Montgomery. Under policies, this will be a second and final reading. Two oh six, public participation in school board meetings, which also along with that, the form of two oh six. Five forty-five, memorial for deceased students and staff. Six oh two, organization of school calendar and school day. And seven twenty-two, the public data requests. Also approval of the bills of the amount of $937,485.56 and also the finance report. I will seek a motion to approve the consent agenda.
I'll make a motion.
Second. Sure, go right ahead.
Just a few things as a reminder to our community members and such within these policies. And I know that this is second and final reading, so these were introduced at the last meeting, but just in case, there are some changes that our community members would want to know. One of them being within public participation, we are increasing the amount of time for, for public participation from the two minutes to a five-minute timeframe, which we hope will help people to feel more comfortable to share their questions or comments or ideas during that timeframe. It still has the same protocols though of communicating or letting us know ahead of time and that the, the board does listen very carefully and takes all input into high levels of respect, but knowing that this would not be the point of conversation and that school board could direct me as the superintendent to reach back out to that person and then to bring other information back if needed as well. The policy with memorial for deceased students and staff, this is a new policy for Tri-City United. It is one that has been enacted in many school districts and one that the policy committee spent a good year and a half on studying and researching and realizing that this is a very difficult time if something like this were to happen. And yet having some policies and practices to be able to navigate that in a thoughtful, respectful manner. And so this does lay out some of the procedures and policies that would take place if in fact we had the sadness of a deceased of a student or a staff member. Another policy which has a new part to it with the organization of school calendar and school day. This does include the statutory allowance for up to five digital learning days, or we call them blended learning days. And this will be our first year enacting these in, at Tri-City United. I want to make sure as our community members to know very clearly, if we do have a school closure due to severe weather, the first day is just a regular like it always has been. It's, it's a school closure day. Students would not be here, staff would not be here, there would not be any assignments. But it is for any beyond that first day that we would be designating as a blended learning day. We have done a little bit of a practice of that with our students. We've had multiple communications to our parents and our staff has just done an outstanding job in preparing for this and realizing hopefully, one, we don't have to use it, but if so, we're going to do our best and work through it in a really meaningful way for our kids and families. And then finally, this is a new policy as well, kind of lays out a little more systems and structures if there are public data requests and there are some charges for the data request if it does exceed a certain number of pages. But it's an important piece. And usually these data requests come from large organizations who are trying to do some research on those kinds of things.
All right, I have a motion on the floor by Dan Rudd, second by Michelle Borcher to approve the consent agenda. All those in favor?
Aye.
Those opposed? Motion is passed, five, zero. Next we move on to our Titan Pride Awards.
All right. I would ask, oh, Mr. Effin's coming on now. I don't know who's coming. Somebody's going to come and give some awards to some outstanding work that people have done.
Good evening, Board. Dr. Preisler, we're happy to be with you tonight. We're going to share three Titan Prides tonight for some of our high school staff and the things that they've been doing to really raise the level here. So if I could have Ms. Emily Erwin and Ms. Allison Bass join us up here first of all. These two ladies have been instrumental to implementing and leading our Titan Pride positive behavioral initiatives that we have done throughout the school year. And we've made a lot of progress in that in the last three years and due to their leadership and working with our group of staff who join them on our team. We meet about monthly and they've gone through training and they come up with great ideas and they come back and we try to implement. And sometimes they're the ones that will look and say, how do we get past this? What can we do? We have not run into a roadblock yet that these two couldn't come up with some ideas and plans to get through, so really critical. We've had, we've implemented some positive things in the last year and a half into our school. And with postcards being sent home, with some pride tickets being given out to kids for recognizing positive behavior and then also for some personal notification by staff to students, we call Celebration Friday, where they get notified and they get a little treat. So first quarter, data is in and we've had over 1,000 positive student-specific interactions from our staff members to our kids. And that's, those are all personal items. And we've had a decrease in referrals. We had about 162 discipline referrals and those are anything from very minor things to larger things. But that's a ratio of about six and a half to one. And we set a goal last year to, to be at about three to one, which we made. And we set a goal this year to raise that to five to one and we already are exceeding that. So those things wouldn't be possible without the efforts of these two. So congratulations. Thank you very much.
Thank you so much. Thank you for all you do. Thank you.
Yep. Of course.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Ms. Erin Winters, please come on up. As some of you may or may not know, but Erin has been with us, actually it'll be one year in about a week. Erin started at TCU the Monday after Thanksgiving last year and has more than enough fulfilled a need in our English Language Arts Department. She's being recognized tonight because she also stepped in last year on some things, but she really stepped forward this year. We had a new activities director in Mr. Johnson and he said, I don't want to be the homecoming person. And Ms. Winters stepped forward and said, I will take that on. And take that on, she did. We had a wonderful homecoming week during the school day of different activities, activities in the evenings. It went extremely well. We had victory, multiple victories throughout that week with, remember that five-set volleyball match that we came back to win and also a homecoming football game victory. But she's the one that set the tone and kept that going throughout the whole week. Erin Winters, congratulations.
Thank you so much.
Thank you for everything very much.
Good evening, Dr. Preisler and board members. This is my first opportunity to recognize some of our individuals as far as the fall season this year. We're very fortunate to have the success we've had in some of our programs, but specifically recognize some of our individuals. Football is a little bit different than the other sports. We're part of, obviously we're part of the Minnesota River Conference, but football is 32 teams and they select an all-district team from the best players throughout those 32 teams. We were fortunate enough to get three of them. Two of them are not here. Matt Bartholomew and Tyler Sladek is not here, but I'd like Sam Barnak to come up here, please. Same as one of the individuals that was a big part of our, come on over a little bit closer. Right there is good. Our football team had a very good season. We were four and four, got advanced into the playoffs this year. We were fortunate enough to beat Worthington Home and then went down to Jackson County Central. And for those that were lucky enough to make the trip, noticed we were ahead nine to seven after the third quarter and they had a fourth quarter running back that had a very good fourth quarter days, or they had a running back that had a really big fourth quarter and we ended up losing. But Sam was a big part of the success for our football team, so a well-deserved honor for being all-district in football. So congratulations. Cross-country, we have a pretty fantastic cross-country program. Our boys are huge in numbers. Our girls are still a growth program, but we're, we're fortunate enough to hold one of the biggest cross-country meets in the state. Anybody that was here in the early part of the year, we had 63 teams here. We had 1,000, 1,864 runners, I believe it was, that ran here for our varsity, JV and junior high cross-country meet. And we're, our section is very tough, but we did have two of our individuals make all-conference, one of them advancing to state tournament. And he would, I was going to recognize him for, as a state entrant in all-conference and that's Hugo Ruiz. He is not here, but Austin Anthony is another one of our individuals. So Austin, could I have you come up here, please? The next six individuals I'm going to recognize, I believe there's only two of them here. So Kendra Blashko, can I have you come up and Sidney Walters, come up. One of the most successful programs in our school, as everybody knows, is our, our FFA. We constantly talk about all-conference, all-area, all-region, all-section, all-state. And we are fortunate enough to have six people that were part of a national event. So that is a, that's a pretty unique honor when you can get away from a small conference region and even through the state and talk about national awards. And these two young ladies were part of the horse evaluation at the national, and that was in Indianapolis. Okay? So they're, they're a big part of our success in our FFA program. We had four other people in the dairy cattle evaluation. Conrad McCready, Brittany Tiddy, Rachel Rinda and Jack Semrell. But I would definitely like to recognize these two. And Mr. Schmidt is over there and probably one of the individuals that is, he's well-known in our school, but probably doesn't get enough of a recognition for the things he does. But congratulations, Mr. Schmidt and both of these two young ladies. So Kendra?
Congratulations.
Super job. Way to go.
Congratulations.
Great job. Way to go.
Where's everyone going? The best part of the meeting's going to happen.
I don't know, recognizing kids is a pretty big deal.
All right, next is our open forum and I believe there have not been any requests to speak in front of the board this evening. So next we'll move on to our informational items. And first up is the, Tiffany is here for our website update.
All right, good evening, Board. Dr. Preisler, I'm just going to do a quick update on what we're looking to do with our TCU website. And I'm talking about our homepage here. So before I kind of show you what we're looking to do, I'm just going to kind of quick review what we have going on and kind of where our goals, what, how we came up with our goals of where we want our website to be. So nothing, you'll notice it, I didn't want to do too many website changes. I wanted everybody to easily navigate and so I'll just show you some things we wanted to improve. Just kind of with our tabs here, kind of looking for larger text, having our picture and our banners be, be larger and take up space. As I looked at other districts and just lots of research and stuff, I was looking at areas that we could kind of grow. So then if I scroll down, it's always nice to have quick links here. They're kind of small, don't catch the eye, but they're important to have. And then we have our news and a little bit limited here with, with what I could do. And we have our quick links here as well, which, and then when we scroll down, we have our social media and then just our contact information. So we're just looking at getting less words, more things like icons and things like that. So, and right now where we were at, working with our school when we wanted to change, I could make these graphics and things, but a lot of times they had to go in it themselves. So with the new layout where we want to go with, it's going to be much easier for me to control and us to control on our end and we don't always have to go through another person when designing it. So bear with some of these, some of these things, but with this website, this banner here is something I would, would come across till about here, but I can't change it until we're totally live, because otherwise it affects our current page, if you can understand that at all. We'll have a banner that comes across nice and big and it also has these other features you'll notice in a second, things like this pop up and I can click on it and it'll bring you to a link. So little features like that are nice. And then we have, I can now add icon, icons for our links here. We have a page for links for parents, for staff, for community members. We've got kind of all those go-to things and unlike before, I can make these larger, I can add an icon, I can switch the order, just a lot more control with that. And then we'll have our news and highlights and celebrations here and then our upcoming events that we can, I can keep up to date and have a nice picture there and expand. And this works well with the mobile app too. Sometimes we would find some, some glitches with just how the web design works. It doesn't always look exactly how you want, but this works a lot more, works well with mobile devices, which a lot of parents and community members are, are viewing. Addition to that, as our social media feeds, it's not showing these, will load once I get active codes for that and it'll give you the preview for that. And then another feature that we have, you can kind of add things about our school district here at the bottom. And these layouts and if we wanted to make, you know, general changes to our website, once again, I have more ability- once again, I have more ability to adjust how things look and where things go versus right now with that. So it's just kind of the general overview, like I said, it looks pretty, nothing too major where you're just like, where would this even be? But I'm, I'm hoping that, you know, parents, if you're looking, this is a good link that brings a link specifically for them. Same with staff, will be able to use it, and really, really everyone, so make it easy to navigate.
What kind of things are you going to put on the upcoming events? We have like the sports activities that are going on for that day and whatnot?
Well, there's a couple, right, there's a, we have the activities calendar that shows the sports, and there is an option where it can have the sport showing that, but then with the activities calendar showing practices and bus schedules, then you can't really see any of like the major events, so it kind of over, overpopulates it with that. So what the upcoming events would just kind of be more of the district-wide events on there, so that, and keeping it to probably just three or four, so that you kind of have an idea and I can adjust it. And I can add the main, the athletic events on here, too, if, if we really wanted to see that, so.
I just think of as having small children and as a new parent to all of this coming in, and having friends, too, the big things, we need to know where to pay the lunch. Like having those things where it's imperative for your kids, right? And not like click here, go here, da-da, the school calendar, and then like Dan said, being a newer parent to the district, if I do want to bring my kids to something, even clicking on the activities calendar, it does throw in all the practices, which is great for kids that are in those activities. But when your kids aren't, but you just want to take them somewhere, it would be really helpful and might help grow our crowds on, not just sports, but anything. If, I don't know if there's a way to just, like for today, here's track, this and this, you know, instead of the practice pieces. Just something to think about.
Okay, yeah, you can work on that.
This is great, and this is a great change. It's very clear and straightforward, and the more straightforward, the better for those of us newer to it.
And I really want to work hard to get the, when you go to these pages, having, you know, we have the new family section, just say, and then a little, just a couple words explanation next to them, instead of just being RevTrack, just saying, you know, you pay, this is how you load, you know, money on your school lunch enrollment. And just a couple words, just to say, oh, that's what that is.
That's great.
So it can help parents, and then, and then just separating them by those three categories helps it, so you don't get, you know, too many, too many links to it. Any other questions?
No, it's very eye-catching also. That's nice.
Just working to get lots of good graphics and trying to communicate all the good things.
But it's all about our kids.
Tiff, is it, you know, even with the present one and the new one, do, do you get information back to how many people are going to these different sites?
Mm-hmm.
Okay.
Yeah.
That's great.
And that was another update that I have is this directory here. On the faculty, you can go to each school, and then it lists each teacher, and they have their page, but the directory is all staff. So I took a lot of time to make sure that that was up to date and has staff pictures and contact information. So I found when I was looking at what was used a lot on our website, that that was the most-used feature, so.
Okay.
Yeah, that's a new thing.
Because a lot of times the teachers never updated their, their pages either, so that's something that, yeah.
And we have had updates for those, too.
Perfect.
How do you search for, like, if you want a social studies teacher, can you find it, like at the high school, click social studies? Just for parents that, okay, because I think right now you got to type in the last name or something.
That's, and that's why I cleaned up the departments with the directory, so we could see, like, let's try to find social studies here, oops, that was Spanish.
Well, anyone is fine.
Yep, yep, and then you could, you could either go by, you wanted to just look at building and things, and then it would populate. When before, we kind of had first grade written out, and then somewhere is like, you know, FIRST, so now it's all kind of consolidated so that you can, so then here are your, so it says that, here's at Monti, the Center High School. And then it also will take them to, and if you click on their name, it has a link to their, their website.
Mr. Vogel.
Fantastic.
So.
Good job. Really nice.
User-friendly. Thank you.
Yep. Tiffany's worked really hard on the, the logistics behind the scene, but also the whole goal of making it cleaner and easier to access. So no one has seen this before tonight.
I like it.
You have the unveiling.
And we're planning on, over the Thanksgiving break, just trying to find an okay time to not, not do it in the middle of the week, but.
Looks fantastic. Thanks for taking that on.
Yeah. All right.
Thanks, Tiffany.
All right, we have our soccer update. I have Mr. Langer, Mr. Johnson here.
Dr. Preisler, board members, just want to give you a update, a little bit on soccer. As you know, last year, at the end of the year, we made an attempt at getting soccer. Our number is needed to be at twenty. And I think my first couple weeks here, I got to come and tell you, we didn't get to that point. So as soon as we started the school year, we hired Mr. Langer here as a social studies teacher. We knew he had a soccer background, talked to him about how to possibly build the soccer program. So we, since it wasn't going to be a Minnesota State High School League and went out of my hands, we met with Mark and Community Ed, and we talked about some Community Ed options. And that's really when it left my hands, because I, now I'm no longer in charge of it, because it's not a state high school league and falls under that. So I'm going to let it, let Mr. Langer kind of talk about that a little bit more. But our plan moving forward through the end of the year, coming in February, I plan to go back and start doing what we did last year, but we, when we did it in May. So February, we, our hope is to have some organizational meetings, talk to the kids about registration in the same kind of format. So if we do that in February, late March, and at latest would be April, because it's a big investment for you guys, the community, the school, the district, everybody for, you know, there's, there's a lot of things, from uniforms to goals to, you know, the balls, and then there's, there's just so many things that you think soccer isn't maybe one of the expensive sports, but it's very contradictory. So that's my, when it left me and switched over to, over to him, and then I, again, I will catch back up here in February and March and try to see where we're at with possibly adding it for next year. And really, to be honest with you, boys have had a lot more success. We just have a lot of girl sports and girl activities in the fall, and the, the numbers haven't climbed like they have for the boys, so that's kind of our status.
Okay, just to kind of give you a little bit of an update on what we've done this fall. Once we moved over to Community Ed, we decided that what we would do is offer training sessions a couple times a week. We started in the second week of September, went through the second to third week of October, finished it up with Saturday afternoon, or it was, I'm sorry, it was Thursday afternoon in the center on, over MEA weekend, and had a beautiful day for it. It was a great time, and it's just been, it's been wonderful that we get done with practice and the kids, they don't want to go home. They just, they want to stay, stick around and just be a part of it. So the excitement level is there. As a teacher, you know, I have students, you know, inquire with me on a frequent basis, you know, is soccer going to happen next fall? And I always tell them, I just said, you know, look, with something we're building towards, if you want to be involved in it, you know, that's going to be one of the things that's going to help this thing throw it over the top and get, get to that number of twenty, and, and more than that. Because I, I think that there's, you know, quite a few kids that want to play, especially boys. And I think, given time, I think that the interest level for, for girls is also there, but I think it's going to take a little bit of a building process, you know, like Mr. Johnson said, that there's just a lot of fall sports that are available for, for the girls. Through that process, we've, we've launched into a, we have a, we're playing in a winter league right now. So we've played three games up in Burnsville, up at Soccer Blast up there. They've won all three of their games, and they play the first, the other first-place team, and so they're kind of tied for first place. They have that game coming up this, this Sunday. And of course, the boys are pretty excited about it. And so basically, just kind of give you the idea of numbers, twenty-three total kids signed up to train with me. Out of that twenty-three, two of them were middle-school kids. And out of that, during that training time, probably saw usually between sixteen and eighteen kids that were there each, each practice, so or each training session. So like I said, the, I, it's there, and I, I think there's a lot of really great things happening, but we have some work to do, and that's something that's going to have to carry over into the spring. And ultimately, they're going to have to make the decision that they're going to get behind it, support it, and make sure that the other kids who are also interested, that they kind of help bring them along and, and, and make it, you know, get as many kids as possible involved. We're a little bit heavy on the top, so we're an older group of kids, a lot of, you know, sophomores, juniors, and a few seniors at this level. So there's going to be, need to be some building done at the junior-high level. And I've, I've been talking with Erin Buckingham, and one of the things that we're going to do this spring is, I'm going to go and offer some, some coaching sessions, things like that, to the spring soccer, the Titans soccer program, our club program that they're doing, get out there and start working with some of these younger kids, especially the junior-high kids, and get them excited so that we're not just taking care of what could potentially happen this next fall, but we're building this program from the bottom up so that there's future in it. One of the things Mr. Johnson and I have talked about is, is, you know, in the event that we can launch this thing next year, that we look at it from a junior varsity level so that we have an opportunity to go forward in a way that we're not potentially varsity next year, because we're, we're top-heavy, and then the year after that, we're dropping back down to junior varsity, and we're up and down until we get this thing really locked in and going forward. So we want to make sure that we do this in a way that's respectful and responsible to the kids that we have there. They're competitive, they feel good about what they're doing, but that we're building these, these programs. So like I said, excited, you know, I appreciate you guys allowing us to have some time to give you an update on where this thing's going. But I think there's a lot of positive things, and I look forward to seeing where we're at in, in February and March.
We'll be meeting with our new Community Ed Director, Lane here. Obviously, he'll be starting here.
Monday.
Monday, so we won't attack him the first few days, but we'll give him a little time, but then we'll have to, obviously, with, with the direction that it has been the last few months, we want to get him connected and get this moving forward into February and March, and we can see where we're at.
Fabulous.
Yeah.
Any questions at all?
Yeah.
All right.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. It's been really fun to see your energy behind this, too, Kerry. Thank you.
You're welcome. You're welcome. It's been a lot of fun.
Yeah.
All right, next we have our superintendent and district goals for the eighteen-nineteen square.
This is kind of the next step within that continuous improvement cycle of Plan Do, Study, Act. And as we concluded, the evaluation for my position this, this fall moves us into the goal-setting cycle. And so based upon that information and feedback in the evaluation, but also where we are within our, our strategic directions work, have a goal in, pretty much in each one of the strategic directions. And of course, the first and foremost is about improving student achievement and closing the achievement gaps. That is a goal I've had before, and for us as a district, but we do have some shifts in some of the action plans. I'll, I'll hit some of those at a higher level than reading through each one. Obviously, we've been starting with our strategic operational planning process and also development of a profile of a TCU graduate input, and then course realignments for nineteen-twenty. We had our board session with Dennis Cheeseborough, and then tomorrow, he's here with about forty-plus of our staff members, doing some strategic operational kickoffs tomorrow from one-thirty to six-thirty, right here in the band room. Within our professional learning communities, continuance of that, I referenced earlier, the MCA benchmark, reports and, and work happening at grade levels, and then a vertically alignment. So one of the things that's been, you know, our staff has worked so hard on guaranteed viable curriculum and common assessments, and now as the, as they learn more and dig in deeper, they're coming forward saying, you know, I don't know that our common assessments are really where we want them to be. And our, our power standards, really the standards. And so the fact that they're questioning that, says they're really dug in deeply and are, are ready to take that to the next level, and that's, that's great work. And again, just an example of our outstanding staff that we have. The response to intervention, continuing that at all-grade levels, really taking a look and analyzing and accessing MDE achievement and integration aid. We did find that we would qualify for this aid area from the state with some recent changes, and we would qualify for that because of our proximity to the Faribault School District. They have been designated as a racially-isolated district, and because we partner or we neighbor them, we would be able to access this. What this basically would mean is some state aid dollars and some local levy, but higher percentage of state aid that could come into the district to help us in sustain, some sustainability of such things as Avid, and also bilingual liaison, and some of our work within our, our English learner population. So it could be a real benefit, and looking to add that into our, our access for state aid. Again, we continue our work with pre-K programming. I know that that's something that Lane's had experience with in Lissaw Henderson, and so we're looking forward to his leadership here. We are furthering our career tech ed opportunities for students. Again, Avid, reference that, the Costas, this was one that's similar to last year, but expansion of our Avid into grade eleven for next year, and taking a look at the possibility of, of elementary. I know we have a lot of elementary teachers saying, fill us some more about this. And so that would be an area for us to at least take a look at. These would be some indicators that will be benchmark areas for that goal and action plans. Taking a look then in the next, obviously, following through on the bond referendum, building projects with full commitment to voter-approved plan. I mean, that's got to be the focus, probably spending seventy-five to eighty percent of my time on that, so it better be a goal, right? But it's, it's too important to not do well. And so we, some of the indicators and action plans for this, obviously, the, the full project areas that we have, we have all of them bid out, and we'll be hearing the bid recommendation for TCU Montgomery Early Learning tonight, and then we still have the bids for TCU Los Center to come forward. We did apply for the school safety grants and were awarded two of the grants. We had written them for each site. Really being transparent and have thorough communication about the building projects internally and externally. The FFNE planning, we have determined that we're going to be working with Interium as a, as a design group, and then begin that design structure here in the next two months. Taking a look at our LTFM structures and where we can use those funds to fully enhance the bond referendum and make sure that we're hitting all of the areas. We'll be engaging our staff in FFNE, and then also taking a look beyond bond referendum into the long-term of health and safety. A third goal area within the strategic operational plan, that's definitely, as you said, going to be a major component as well for our student achievement. We'll be conducting our, the planning process with the school board and our staff, starting. We'll be engaging with our staff in November and December, and then bringing it back to the board in January, February, with our three-year school board operational agenda aligned to it. We can, we are currently conducting daily experiences survey with our staff, students in grades seven, seven, and parent guardians. We, right now, as I look before the board meeting tonight, have nine-hundred-and-ninety-nine responses. Most of them are students, so that'll be really exciting to see. And then obviously, the biggie will be to implement the actions determined through that planning process. Excuse me, I tickle my throat here tonight. And then finally, a really big area as well is developing college career and life readiness pathways, courses, and opportunities for all students. Increasing our knowledge of college, our, knowledge of, sorry, college career and life readiness work that is being implemented with other districts. We do have representatives of TCU in each of our communities heading to Hutchinson on Thursday for a Tiger Path session, to hear what they're doing, and also other districts in the Midwest. Going to be analyzing our current course offerings and our alignment to be sure that we truly are having a good, solid emphasis of college career and life readiness for all students. In fact, determine the effective and meaning, meaningful progression of these courses as well, and, and also just in general across our K-12. Continue our work with Guided Pathways to Success Grant. We do have interviews tomorrow for the Workforce Development Coordinator position. Had great candidates there. Another goal would be, our action step would be to increase our partnerships with local businesses, skilled trade entrepreneurs, industry, manufacturing industry, health services, and other organizations, ultimately providing authentic experiences for our students to be exploring careers and trades. Conduct our profile of TCU graduate survey. Conduct our profile of TCU graduate survey. Engage and communicate with our legislators to really increase CTE supports for our public education. Avid is also a big piece of that. And then also increase awareness of the racial and socioeconomic equity impacts in relation to college career and life readiness. Really holding true to all means all and inclusive of our beliefs, our cultural response of education, and removing barriers that may impact access to opportunities for all So those are basically the, the goals and action steps as per, for my position as superintendent and also in guiding and leading and supporting our school district to higher levels of achievement for all students. Any questions or revisions or things that are missing or?
I could have a full plate again.
Usually do. It's why my stomach's growling here tonight at the meeting. No time to eat, but that's okay.
Yeah, I think it looks great.
I do too. I appreciate all your efforts.
Trying to, trying to, to lay out the, the vision of where we're heading and not that it's my vision, that it's, that it's collectively our work where we need to go and providing and supporting our staff to help make that happen too.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, we have our TCU Montgomery bid recommendation. You're up.
Yes. I believe Mr. Maroney brought some guests with him tonight for us to get to meet as we're going to be seeing them more in the future, aren't we?
Okay, well Carl is loading up the good news.
You want to start it or should I? Can I do it from here? Nope.
Turn it off.
Oh, you want mine?
Technology always fun, right? It's funny how they knew you wanted mine.
Trying to get to it. The numbers he's going to show us.
It's funny because they're yours, because it's always got a penny.
Yeah. Okay, we're working without a net here. Okay. What do you think? Can you fire it up?
Yep.
Hit you? You have it on the right side? Sometimes it doesn't work on the left.
Our medical care plans.
Hello.
Hi. Now that the behind-the-curtain stuff is over.
Well, thank you again for inviting us here tonight. My name is David Maroney, president of ATSNR. Have with me a guest. This is Nancy Lebasinair. She's associate partner, architect with our company, and she's been working on Montgomery. So she knows everything about Montgomery if you have any questions about it. Okay? And she's also working on La Center as well, so taking those two projects on. Okay, so let's get going here. Remember last time we met and I said, oh, God, it's fun opening up bids that are under the budget. Remember that? And everybody's happy and smiling, we're all friends and everything. I said, now one day, there might be a bid opening that isn't under the budget. So we'll all be happy then too. So anyway, that's tonight. It's got nothing to do with Nancy being on the job, but she is very detailed and this is a very detailed project for the earliest learners in your community. Okay? So let's just go on a little journey of where we were. This is back in September of two thousand seventeen. Remember, this was the whole idea here. We were going to do the pre-K or the early childhood renovation in that existing space and a new entry, secure controlled entry there. And that's pretty much what we were going to do. Okay, that was the whole emphasis of it. We had a little bit of site work out here. See that little green spot? Hard to see, but it's there. Little bit of site work. We knew that we needed to get, you know, wheelchair to that, to that entry. This was the update we gave in May, kind of where we were with it as we were doing the planning and starting to develop the spaces. And this is where we are today. And a very comprehensive plan as far as the early childhood spaces, the ECFE, SE, the office addition, this is an addition to the space here that has an ECFE office and a community ed office, those two components. You can see there's a lot more green on this plan, okay? So there's, you know, getting drainage in and out of there and kind of reconciling all that stuff and the walkways and the access from the parking and.
Any wrap-off.
It's funny when you get, you know, the engineers involved and then all the survey work done and all this stuff. Well, that's what, and part of what contingencies are for to a point, but basically, there is a lot of site work on here. We even had a little more planned, but we'll go into that in a minute. There's a little bit more expansion here, like a sibling room and some extra space, a little conference area that just made sense, you know, to do kind of underutilized space in that district area next to it. Again, we're not adding any square footage for this, but it's additional programming and really fulfilling that program in a more complete way. So, I don't know, lots of meetings on that. And this is really a good plan. We do have the four classrooms, we've got the centralized activity area, and we've got a wonderful toilet area that services basically the parents and the students in a kind of a creative way. It's, it's very flexible and very inviting. There's also a little kitchenette area. Kitchenette, no, wet area. Okay, there was a dishwasher plan for that. But any case, the, this is the plan. So what happened? We got four bidders. This was on November first, submitted bids for the project. We did have an internal team evaluate the alternate bids because we had some, like on the high school, we had alternate bids, so we evaluated those. We conducted a pre-award with the low bidder so that we got to know their team and who would be assigned to the project. And we formulated the recommendation that you guys probably have in your, your board packet here. Okay? Same procedure as usual. Here's the four bidders. This is the bid tab. Metcon was the low bid and not by much, pretty close, one-point-five-five-nine, one-point-six-one-five. Actually, the next bidder was only five thousand more than that. Very tight bids. I think a lot of people were entrusted in your project. We also had a fourth bidder that was high. This is a normal bid curve. I mean, it's actually a little, well, it's very tight in the center. We got the low bidder, then typically with this many bids, you always have a high bidder too. And then you can see where the alternates are here. So basically, this is the bid tab that was attached to the recommendation. So let's just go over some of the items here, what we're going to be seeing as this project moves forward if you award it tonight. Basically, on this site, we're going to see, we want the addition, this office addition to begin April first, so kind of when the snow clears and the frost goes out, that type of thing, we can start building. In that, it's outside the building, so we're not going to disrupt any of the, the activities that are inside the building, but we can get going on this early in the spring. We're going to set up a staging area for the contractor to put some materials there in the corner of the parking lot, so all that's pretty much pre-planned, like the job trailer, you know, if they're going to have one, it'll be right here. So we're trying not to disrupt that parking lot at all during the school year. Because once summer hits, we're going to start renovating this interior. That's when we'll, I don't know if we'll see a bobcat in there or not, but I mean, it's, it's, it's a pretty aggressive renovation. Basically, everything's going to get cleared out and it's all going to be brand-new when we're, when we're done. The, that's when we'll also do all the site work out here. So again, it's all summer twenty nineteen, so next summer is when we're going to have this activity on the site. With the exception of the staging area in the corner in the spring and some construction here, footings, foundations, get the walls up.
Move catch basin in that spot.
Some, some of the underground storm sewer there will have to be moved also. But we do need to be conscious of maintaining exiting out of here. This is an important exit from the building and so on and so forth. Let's get into some of the alternates that we reviewed with the administrative team. Basically, we had some additional drainage corrections on the site. There's some wet ponding water.
There's a low spot up in the corner that you guys probably all know all about.
They've all seen it, walked through it, been frustrated by it. Anyway, so what we do is we do the engineering, we see what we can do to rectify that, and then we get a price. Was it sixty-five thousand, five hundred dollars?
And that happened to be the highest number of all of the contractors that, for that particular alternate. Unfortunately, you can't pick and choose the lowest price from the contractor, so.
Comes as a package. The second alternate, so that's what's identified in the gray there, the second alternate is basically restoration of this outside wall here. We've got some damage to the existing lintels which hold up the building over the windows and does that include window work on that too?
It's just the lintel.
Just the lintels.
And basically some exterior work that then deals with putting it all back together once it's, once the lintels are repaired.
So again, good to go for the next fifty years type of an approach as opposed to having to go back in there now that we've done all this work, there's some more work that we might have to do. So we wanted to include that. In a way, it's LTFM because it's existing stuff, but, but basically that is this area right here, it's identified in the red, it's on the south wall, and that's thirty-eight thousand dollars. Is that the correct number?
Yep.
And the third alternate was for a dish machine and a socialated water softener for the dish machine, which is in that area, that, this classroom here. Eighteen thousand dollars, kind of an expensive dishwasher, I'd say.
And, and for some, some plumbing that connects basically to it, so it's not just the two pieces of equipment, it's the piping that connects it all as well.
It was one of those that'd be awesome to have if we can afford, but not essential to the program. In the purple here, this is the security package that actually is kind of tied in with that security grant, by the way. Congratulations on getting that successful recognition from the state on that. So that's identified here. And so basically, that alternate, we needed to do it as an alternate because it's a prevailing wage component because of the funding source. And so that's basically, we identified some of the aspects of that security, called it an alternate, and that's how it's put together, kind of like we did the La Center roof when we did that extension of the roof area. So basically, that's almost like a pass-through because you're getting your grant to afford that. And actually, it's less than your grant, so that's a whole other thing. So the administrative team looked at this and recognized the importance of getting the exterior wall in order and of course, the security package because of the grant being received. And basically, that was the premise of this entry anyway. So basically, we did not recommend accepting alternate one or three, but accepting alternates two and four. Any questions on those alternate bids? Okay, so what does it look like then? Here's the big roll-up here now. Okay, so we've got Metcon Construction, and that name rings a bell because yes, they're doing the high school. There is going to be a different superintendent though because we have to have one for each site because of the simultaneous activities, they can't just drive back and forth and call it good. Okay, so there's a separate site superintendent for this project. So with these base bid, the two alternates, this is how it rolls down. Base bid, that's the number. The review and comment estimate was eight-hundred-and-sixty-two thousand. Holy mackerel. Let's let that settle in for a minute. Okay, that's enough. We knew that though because when we were doing this project, we knew that we were going to be expanding the scope of this and we needed to do some other things. And our updated estimate with the, including the price escalation that we were anticipating back then and including the additional scope for this project, we were really at one-point-three million, still less than what this bid is. Okay? Now, the good news is that all the bids that we've received, that was the number we were targeting, not the review and comment number. So it isn't like, well, we didn't have that accommodated based on the Lonsdale efficiency in the bidding, you know, the high school good competitive bids and below the, we had some available money. So that number was good going in. In fact, we were kind of sitting with a little bit of a surplus you're going to see going into this bid. So actually, bridging the gap here, I'm going to show you what happened, where the current state is right now, but we're at one-point-three-four-two, that was our estimate going into this bid. That's what it was when we accepted the alternate, number two. And if you put the security grant on top of it, it's about one-point-six million dollars. So it's like two-hundred-and-fifty thousand over. And working with Gene, business manager, on this, we knew going into this bid, we had a surplus of bond funds of about two-hundred-and-fifty thousand dollars. So even though disappointed, it's not a showstopper. Because this is really what it looks like right now. This is, and Terry, this probably surprised him to tell you, I was going to show you, show him this, but, but this is how we're all looking at it. You know, this is what the administrative team looks at and, you know, these numbers are the bond referendum totals right out of the review and comment. That's in the gray there. That's, that's our goal. That's, that's what we want to hit because we need to hit that number, period. Not a dollar more, okay? That's the rule. So that we live and die by this stuff. I mean, diet, it's kind of dramatic, but.
Yeah, I hope not.
Sometimes you don't feel as good about it. So I mean, these are just, you know, right out of the review and comment, the published document. These are the estimate and the bid amounts now, like, like Dr. Preisler had talked about, we bid for the five projects now. Okay, so we're well into this, there's only one left and that's La Center. When we roll these numbers down, these are now actual numbers of what we're dealing with here and real construction costs with the exception of La Center is still an estimate. These are basically allocations. You see the FFNE, you know, the interim piece? Eight-seventy-seven, eight-seventy-seven. Why is it the same number? Because we're just, we're just still using those as budgetary placeholders for the whole bond. Okay? Same with the, any technology infrastructure, specialized equipment, that type of thing. The contingency, pretty much the same, but actually, it grows a little bit because, in part because of the Montgomery project being over, we're still holding that ten percent for that project. Okay? So that's the same. Why is this number smaller? Well, remember when we were talking about our contract, I said we had a certain assumption for our fees and for the bond referendum and the review and comment and that we were cutting those fees, self-negotiation? There it is. I mean, that's, that's where it is right now. So these are based on actual now, what we're shooting for, these were the bond allocations. So these are kind of a mixture right now, some bond allocations and actual. Bottom line is, back in May, when we knew that we were expanding the scope of the Montgomery project into some of these other areas and some of these other needs, we actually started talking about allocating some LTFM funding to that. We put it in, kind of kept it rolling for a while. And then at the point where actually, we were done with the Lonsdale bid and the high school bid, we're feeling pretty good, like I say, we had that quarter of a million-dollar buffer in there. We went ahead and made an administrative team decision to not access that funding and that put the Montgomery project into a non-pervailing wage bid. Okay, so we cleaned that up, made it, just went for it.
Other than, other than.
Other than the security piece, which was the alternate, exactly. So long story short, sorry about this, but basically, here's our target for, for project costs from the bond. That's where we are today. We're five thousand dollars off with all this. So bad news is still pretty good news. Still pretty dang proud to be less than a fraction of a percent off of this target. And we'd still need La Center, we get, we're rolling La Center out. We're still working with a kind of an enhanced estimate, which is that greater inflation estimate. Haven't changed that at all, still have the ten percent contingency, but there might be some additional needs there. So, you know, we've got a little bit of La Center's LTFM, the roofing allocation that could be in reserve, that maybe if we want to fix some windows or do some things like that, we can access that. Plus, we've got the grant, security grant there that can weigh into that. So, you know, I think we're in a good shape. I think we're in really good shape going into there, but we got to hold the line on that scope. You know, it's an HVAC project and some administration remodel and that secure entry. You know, that's the bottom line on that project. So, you know, I, I don't know. I, I think, you know, in this case, it's, it's still working out just really well. Okay? And, you know, well, go, five thousand dollars, well, that still has our allocation of our contingency in place, which, you know, actually, we've got seven thousand dollar remaining contingency on the La Center roof project that can be rolled back into, because we're, that's done. That project's done. I mean, we're splitting hairs here, but I, you know. Which, you know, actually, we've got seven thousand dollar remaining contingency on the La Center roof project that can be rolled back into, because we're, that's done, that project's done. I mean, we're splitting hairs here, but I, you know, bottom line is, we're watching the dollars, district's watching the dollars. We're, you know, we're just working on this thing, step by step, month to month. There's going to be some changes, some change orders, there are change orders on the La Center roof, you know? We're going to see some change orders coming up on the high school, you know, we're digging in the ground. Who knows what's in the ground? Not me. Now we're starting to get a feeling for what's in that ground, so that'll be another discussion. But anyway, that's what that contingency is for, just keep remembering that, okay?
Well, and plus we have the Montgomery School Safety Grant, that would be an in-out unless you've included that in the original.
That's true.
And then for La Center, we have at least a hundred-and-fifty thousand, that is School Safety Grant, that would be coming out of that estimate as well.
Exactly.
Gives us a little bit of wiggle and plus then not having touched LTFM, which we did talk about quite a few months ago. Would make sense then to look at La Center having a little more flexibility within all of those funding allocations and probably a prevailing wage type of project.
I think it's headed that way, I think it'll be a straight prevailing wage job and that'll be fine.
Yeah, it gives us much more flexibility in the, and also for contractors to, to be more feasible in, in doing their bids when it's a straight. Rather than trying to divvy out here, there and stuff.
Agreed.
Exactly, yeah. It still feels like we're on the right path.
We're on the right path.
We're, we're, it feels good.
Good.
I appreciate you sharing this, being transparent and seeing the ins and the outs, I think that helps and understands, even if we are up a few thousand, why it shook down the way it did.
Exactly.
And as a taxpayer, I feel comfortable having that wiggle room, so I appreciate that.
I mean, what we're trying to do is solve all the needs that were outlined in the bond referendum. And you know, some projects are going to take more and some are going to take less, and that's the way it works, you know, the estimates are the estimates. We're hitting the road now with the rubber meets the road here. I think we're, yeah, it's, it's still a good story here, I'm glad we didn't access the LTFM for any of it and we're in great shape. So you know, here's what, here's what's been going on, you know, referendum. And a lot of stuff has happened on this project, we did bid it and November first, here's when we start construction. And it'll all be done by August sixteenth. Now, that's another thing, right, you've got your early out for next year, so that gives us another week or two, almost, week and a half or so. And the contractors are appreciating that, by the way, you know? We're getting some positive feedback from, from the contractors that are engaged in, in the summer jobs, that that's an advantage. And also bidding them when we're bidding them is helping too. It's, they're filling their plate for next year. And then of course, what's next, we're going to be issuing documents for La Center on December eleventh. Bid date, January eighth. Why is that a little bit later? Well, there's some other things going on there, I guess there was a steam deal with the.
Do you recall over spring break, we had the pipe steam in the band room. We did need to gut a lot of areas there, we do need to reconstruct that room, it is usable, but is it at the level that it, that we would want it or our kids need to have it? No, there's going to need to be some pieces there, some of that does connect with HVAC and some of that is just simply needing to. Get something on the wall or on the floor besides cement, but it's making it work right now, but due to that. We also know then, as we were doing the roof, as we shared in communications, we had some windows, we have some windowsill issues that are still allowing some leaks. It's not a roof issue, it's a window issue. Our goal is to, when this is all said and done, we don't have leaks over there anymore, so that's going to take some work. We also have a wall area that, interestingly enough, some of the superintendents of the, from Metcon were a part of that. And so they can help us with a little bit of other history that will help fill in some gaps there too. So there, there are some pieces that we need to address and that would make sense then for LTFM to help out with that. Yes, those were not a part of the original bond and LTFM funds would be appropriately used in those areas.
Definitely. So that'll start construction May twenty-seventh and be done by the start of school year nineteen-twenty. So that's a purely summer job. Okay? Any questions?
It's pretty amazing to have bid this many projects and of course to be where we're at though.
I think especially with the, with that whole inflationary bubble that blew through here, it's like, holy cow. I mean, I don't want to go in too deep, but there are a few districts that are not having this kind of luck or outcomes.
Well, it was projected and for where we're sitting in our budget relative, I mean.
We're doing good.
Yeah.
We're doing good, but that takes a lot of work and it takes a lot of honest consideration of everyone involved. Because you know, people aren't coming in and saying, hey, I want this or I want, you know, it's a, it's a total team effort and that's really how projects work the best. We appreciate that.
Do you have any feeling, I mean, of number of bidders for that La Center HVAC and that type of project?
Well, we've seen what, two bidders on a high school project here. We've seen four on the last one, we saw the most on Lonsdale, that one didn't surprise me, that was, I'm just going to say that was the simplest project. High school was certainly good, but it was big, okay? Now, this one was complex and we saw a wider range of bidders again. I don't know, similar, I suppose. You know?
Not going to hold it to you.
Please don't. We just, we just always hoped that at least two showed.
You know, we just make phone calls to try to solicit those contractors to bid.
People excited about it.
Yeah, but we of course can't control what other projects they've already gotten and what else they're looking at and all the rest of it, so yeah.
Well, I know, we'll go, we'll get ten, who knows? I was at one bid opening in Brookings a couple of months ago, actually, there was one bidder.
And then what, yeah, that's harder.
Yeah, it was the right bidder, it worked, you know, it was just the site worked, but one bidder, that's an old boy. Okay? Excellent. Well, I'm going to stay here because somebody else is going to come up here.
Nice to meet you.
Somebody else you need to be.
Thanks for coming.
We can, we can shut that down, right?
This is just a very brief update as to what we're doing out on the site right now and the construction of your other facilities.
Now, have you all met Keith?
No.
No.
This is Keith Stockman, he's construction administrator with ATSNR. Keith's role is to make sure that everything is built in accordance with our documents.
Been doing this for like twenty-some years.
I'm so, so excited.
Yeah. Retirement's looking nice, you got to understand that. I like the guys, gentlemen, down here, his shirt, that summer takes. Yes, chop the same place. So for an update, I think you've already touched base a little bit on this this evening about the La Center roof project replacement. Just to announce or make it official that the project has been completed. We have the roofing manufacturer who does the job site inspected for installation and found it acceptable. And giving us at that point, issuing the manufacturer's thirty-year warranty on the roof, we've closed out all the documentation, we've turned it over to the school district. So you know, we're done, done with that project, so just, we won't be dealing with that any further in these meetings.
Doesn't that sound nice, thirty-year warranty?
Next project we started up with was Lonsdale Elementary School addition. We started the earthwork and the soil corrections around September twenty-first. There was some suitable soils that were removed and replaced. They have since then completed the building pad, they have installed all the footing and foundations and all the underground plumbing. So where we're at now, we're out of the ground, we're starting to go up into the air. The pictures I've shown you is kind of, is showing you the fact that we had to shelter the masonry, the mortar plant and the walls that we're working on. They're starting with the south wall, just now with the concrete masonry wall units, the goal is to try to get the walls up, the roof on. So they continue to work inside the building, have to deal with winter construction. We had enclosed at this point, we have late December weather in the middle of November. So we had to take some time to enclose and apply some heat here for that type of construction. So this project is, is on track, it's going well, we haven't had any issues with this project and it's.
If you've seen that little tent that's out there, that's kind of, that's kind of, it's kind of cool actually. There's a pic in the lower left, that's what it looks like inside there, there's people in there like with.
Short sleeves.
Yeah, basically short sleeves, working.
Now, when it gets below zero, it won't be quite that warm, but it's, it's close to six, upper sixty, seventies in there right now, so. But we've had a couple of days of mild temperature, we were in there last night, so. It's, it's, yeah, once it gets colder, they'll, they'll want the heat there, so. So that's all we have on Lonsdale. At the high school here, borrow this map from your website, we have three areas that we are tracking as far as construction. Area A is the auditorium, area B is egg shop and lab, which is a primarily a precast structure. And area C is a science and classrooms, which is a concrete block, face brick, composite wall construction type of assembly. They started work around October twenty-second. We're going to start, the report's going to start with area C because that's where the contractor started over on the east side at the south, south end building east side. And they started with the earthwork, they've done some soil corrections, relocated the utilities to get them out of the way of the new construction. And those utilities that will be eventually replaced. Footings started on November fifth and they're now completed in that area of the building. Fortunately, pictures don't help you very much because again, we have cold weather and we have to protect everything, it's in place to let the concrete cure to the strength that we need, so.
So Keith, those are like insulated blankets that they put over the concrete to keep, keep the heat in.
They're waterproof and they're insulated, yes. So at some point, they'll come off here in the near future because we'll start the masonry foundation walls. They should be starting about later this week, it'll probably take about a week and a half, but bring the foundation walls up, this will be a masonry foundation wall up to about the grade elevation. And they'll tent this area just like they did over at Lonsdale, similar type of construction enclosure. And get the foundations up, which will allow them to backfill and then they'll continue, and then they'll start looking like Lonsdale with the scaffolding and the plastic. So that the height of the structural wall can be built. And that is the wall, exterior wall construction will start sometime around November twenty-third according to the contractor's project schedule. So that'll be, that'll be, they're moving right along. They started there so that the masonry contractor could get to work on the project and that's the one area he's able to work on. And area B, which is the labs or the, excuse me, the egg shop area, they are now starting the footings and foundations. First quarter pour of concrete for those footings was today. And after those foundations are poured, footings are poured, then the structure supporting the walls there are concrete poured wall. And that is where the precast bears on those concrete foundations. Precast wall right now are scheduled for around December seventeenth. So, okay? And then the roof, joists and decks for both B and C should be arriving around the latter part of December, around the twenty-fourth. And once we get the lid on them, we can put the roof on and get some heat inside. Again, starting to do the finish work, the mechanical work, electrical work that goes on within the building itself. The other area that we're discount underway is area A, which is your auditorium. And they're currently working on the soils and, and earthwork in that area. Area A foundations and footings should be starting next week. Again, that's a precast structure, a lot of precast structure in there, you have some very big precast panels in that area. And that is expected on the job site toward the end of January, around January twenty-first. And that's a time you want to see this because it'll be a big crane, these panels are thirty feet tall.
How tall?
Thirty feet?
Yeah, the stage ones are taller than that.
Okay, they're taller than that. The proscenium beam is really, really very heavy too, so. Be one of the largest cranes around here being used. The last project, which you just discussed, which is Montgomery Elementary Middle School, early childhood additions. As David mentioned, we took bids on that and which we'll make a motion on. We are anticipating if, if it's awarded this evening, having a kickoff meeting for that project about the first week of December. The contractor is still working on qualifying the bids, they're the same ones on the high school, we're all busy right now, so. They are too, and they asked if we could hold off the pre-con for that until sometime in December. With not starting until April, it gives us plenty of time to get shop drawings, shop drawings or some of those that they sent us, we checked to make sure they understand and the intent of the contract documents. And there's some design information in there too that needs to be reviewed, engineering problems. So we'll get that one going here probably sometime in December. I said I'd keep it short, so. Any questions?
My only question is like, obviously, like you said, it's late December weather right now. When they're backfilling these footings and stuff, are they using onsite soils with the frost or are they? I guess I'm just worried about settlement next spring. How, how are they doing that, I guess is my.
The excavation and backfilling activities is monitored by an independent testing laboratory that you have hired. And they monitor the work, they're not allowed to use any frozen materials in excavation or backfilling. They are using blankets, like example, area B, they're pouring it today, but if you look closely at the bad photographs, there's blankets down in those trenches. So the frost is not penetrating into, at that point. So they'll keep that area heated until they can backfill. And then at that point, the backfill protects the footings from frost penetration. So it is, is watched closely by a third party out there for our benefit, our use. Most of the material coming right now is imported.
Okay, it is.
Yeah, which is a granular fill, which is not very expansive, so.
Right.
Keith, with our two holiday coming up, your discussion with, with the contractors, are they going to, you know, work to the twenty-third of December? And then come back on the twenty-sixth, twenty-seventh? Or are they going to take a period of time off like many companies do, have you had in?
We have not had that discussion yet, I, my personal belief, I don't think they'll do that. One thing I didn't point out at Lonsdale, for example, they're in the building right now, an existing building right now, running heating and cooling pipes at night. And this adds about four extra days to that little scope of work, but they want to get a jump on it. They're, you know, they're willing to spend that time, that overtime to come in and do that work now as opposed to waiting until the, to the, school's not in session or during the, next summer. And expend that extra time to, to work within the building as opposed to doing it more efficiently. I would think with, because of the timeline we have on these schedules, these construction projects, they will be working through, just taking the necessary holidays off. Deer season is probably your biggest. That's when we started losing the most.
Did any of the contractors set up a camera, like a live video?
No, but Carl has.
We have.
Oh, we have.
And we, we do have the links on our website, one of them has been kind of stalled and so we're kind of getting the, maybe that's been, worked the kinks out. The other one, pardon me?
Andrew was working over the weekend on that angle there, so we should have, we also have captured the video for that.
The website has a lot of updated information. Is it Carl, are you doing that?
That's Tiffany.
Tiffany, yeah, I mean, there's some good progress photos in there, in the video, yes, it's right in the district website.
Setting times.
Well, I just want board to know, I've had the great pleasure to be working with some just really outstanding professionals, starting with Dave, but also Nancy as she came in. I don't know, I've ever seen someone know codes as well as she does and, and the ins and outs and they're right, the Montgomery renovation is complex. It's a lot of things in there and, and she kept attention to every detail and really appreciated that. And all of the engineers and architects that we've had a chance to work with in owner meetings, they, they come in well-prepared. They're knowledgeable, they've got some, you know, they're problem solvers, so that's been great. And having a chance to work with Keith a few times every week here now. Starting to catch his sense of humor a little bit. But he's straightforward, he's thorough, he's, he's definitely our, our link and liaison. So everything's flowing through him and I know that when something gets asked of Keith, he follows up with it. So it's just really fun to be working with people who are really good at what they do. And in a totally different arena than where, you know, my background and experience is. So I learn every single meeting I go to and I'm, I'm just really pleased to be working with this team.
Appreciate that, thank you.
All righty, is that anything else for us?
Thank you guys.
Thank you. Good night.
Next we have our American Education Week.
Uh, next we have our American Education Week, which is this week?
Yes, it is. Um, we know that, uh, American Education Week is something that's been celebrated, I think this might be the ninety-eighth year of it, if I'm remembering on the proclamation. Uh, but it is about honoring, uh, public education and recognizing the impact that public education has, um, on our nation and on our, um, in our futures. And as we bring this more locally here to Tri-City United, um, it is, it's a real pleasure and honor to work with the staff that we have here. Uh, be it our custodians, our food service, our clerical, our, um, our IT, um, paraprofessionals, our educators, our administrators. Everyone gives their all every single day, and, uh, their heart is in their work, and our kids are at the focus. And so we can be just really proud to be a part of, uh, of this school district and this, uh, region for education, and, you know, as it says, public education. It's a, it's a right and it's a responsibility, and we take that very seriously, so I'm really, uh, proud to be bringing forward this proclamation to you as a board on behalf of our entire Tri-City United staff.
Tri-City United Public School District, American Education Week proclamation. Great public schools, a basic right and our responsibility. Whereas, public schools are the backbone of our democracy, providing young people with the tools they need to maintain our nation's precious values of freedom, civility, and equality. And whereas, by equipping young Americans with both practical skills and broader intellectual abilities, schools give them hope for and access to a productive future, and whereas, education, education employees by the teachers, substitute educators, school office support staff, custodians, administrators, confidential employees, bus drivers, paraprofessionals, or nutrition staff, work tirelessly to serve our children and communities with care and professionalism. And whereas, schools encourage community, bringing together adults and children, educators and volunteers, business leaders, and elected officials in the common enterprise. Now therefore, we, serving as a school board, chair of Tri-City United School District, do hereby proclaim November twelfth through the sixteenth, two thousand eighteen, as the observa, observance, observance of American Education Week.
Um, we've had, uh, our appreciation breakfast so far at, uh, TCU, um, Lonsdale and TCU High School. Tomorrow morning, we'll be at TCU Lift Center, Friday at TCU Montgomery, and our staff has, uh, really appreciated the breakfast, but just really appreciate, um, coming together and, and, uh, honoring and celebrating one another. So it's, it's a great week to take time to think of those who saw something in you that you maybe didn't see in yourself, and that's what education's all about.
All right, next we have our enrollment update.
We did see, um, here as we're coming into November, just a slight dip, which is a typical pattern within our, uh, our enrollment history. Um, usually when we're hitting around that October time, families begin to move, and so, uh, our, our bottom line number here is at, uh, one thousand eight hundred and fifty-three. You see, that's a little bit of a drop from, from last month, and again, like I said, this is a normal pattern for us. Um, we are ranging pretty close to where we were last year. We're about ten students behind where we were a year ago and this month, um, but holding steady to where we've been in previous years as well. Uh, our enrollment projections did show that, um, you know, we'd be, we grew early, meaning in our beginning years as TCU, which we have. We've held fairly steady from that though, and, uh, in particular, many of our area, our grade levels of growth are at our high school, which is, was the big piece within our overcapacity areas there. Um, we are doing some census work and analysis within our, uh, uh, pre-K and, and, um, the census of, uh, births being born. Um, I know that sounds weird, but babies being born and, and really tracking where our, um, uh, retention of, uh, those births are. We hold fairly steady. Um, this was kind of an anomaly to have our TCU Lonsdale at this, uh, low of a number, but it does show that we should be, uh, picking back up next year, and we're, we're hoping to do that, and then do some action steps on better and further communications about kindergarten roundup, um, getting our census information, um, at more hospitals in the area, and just really being intentional about, uh, getting our name out there as to, if you moved into the area, let us know you're here, cause otherwise, we don't know.
All right, we have committee updates. Uh, first would be our wellness.
Uh, we met for the first time this year. Um, just kinda getting all of our ducks in a row, discussing what's been working. Uh, no major changes in the wellness area at this time. Which is good, which is good. It was all good. It was just kinda touching base and, and seeing where everything is, and, um, I don't have the numbers in front of me, but Amy was giving us some pretty spec, you know, she had the actual numbers on the increases that, um, of the number of kids that are accessing our lunch program and breakfast programs. Um, is, is just, it, they're great numbers. They're, they continue to increase, which means the kids must be liking what we're offering, so. But Amy does a really good job of, uh, asking the kiddos what they want and what they, what they like the best, and what we should have more of, and so on, so. It works out really well. Amy does a great, great job.
Yeah, our whole food service staff has done phenomenal, and we added a, a second line at our high school this year to try and be able to accommodate the increase in numbers so that students aren't waiting in line quite so long. It's a little bit of an adjustment, but boy, our staff just really, uh, really stepped up, and it, it moves along really very well.
Yeah, she said it's been working out really very well, so.
Good, yeah. Transportation.
Um, we went through, um, the inspections on the bus that the DOT does. Um, I think there was three very minor things. One was a speaker cover, you know, and, that they saw, and so they just had to fix that. There was another leak. I don't remember if it was by the manifold or something like that. And I don't remember, was there two or was there three?
Uh, well, it was only a total of eleven points out of everything and, and no fails whatsoever, and so this was by far, I mean, it, it, every year, the, uh, inspections have improved, and this was by far even better than all the rest, so really, really pleased with the, the work that's been done.
Um, now, we talked a lot about Versatrans, which is, uh, routing software that we're converted over, converting over to, um, just to help become more efficient with routes and, um, things like that, if we can transport more students, less buses, things like that, um, kinda stuff, so. Everybody's kinda looking forward to doing that, making sure that we're as efficient as we can with the bussing that we have. Um, then we talked, that kinda led us into, um, that there's legislation right now trying to avoid other school districts coming into other, certain school districts, you know, so, um, seeing where that goes and what that, what that would do for us. I think there was a write-up in the paper. Can you help me, what was it, down in?
Uh, Kenyon Wanamango and Zambroda Mazepa. And that's, uh, the legislators from that area introduced a bill last session, and they plan to bring it back again this session.
So that passes, that actually helps us retain more of kids within our district, so. Want to say anything?
Um, just some timelines for Versatrans finalization, and then, uh, taking a look at future routing efficiencies. Uh, the start of the year went really very well. It was a good, smooth start. Um, it's, uh, got where they needed to be in the timelines that they should be, and that's what you can always hope for within, uh, with your, with your buses. Keeping them safe.
Great, and Southwest?
Um, very, very short meeting this time. Superintendent Preisler was also in attendance. Uh, as I said earlier, probably the absolute shortest meeting since I've been there. I think about thirty-five minutes, and they were out. The powers to be had places to go, and so they, uh, moved it through quickly. Uh, as far as the Southwest Metro, you know, that particular meeting, uh, they do their, um, seniority list in the fall of the year, and so, uh, they actually do it during their workshop, and so that was approved. Um, moving forward as far as their levies, uh, you know, that we will see what, what our amount will be. Uh, and Jean probably already has gotten that information, you know, that, but a very, very quick and almost wondered if we even should have had it, in my opinion, but we did.
Wonderful, thanks, Dan. Right, that was it, right?
Mm-hmm.
Okay, next we'll move on to our new business. We're awarding the contract for the TCU Montgomery Building Project to Metcon Construction Incorporated of Fairbowl.
Members of the board, this, uh, would be, um, an action item based upon the recommendation that, uh, Dave Maroney has presented earlier this evening, uh, based upon the bids from four contractors and, uh, awarding the bid to the low bidder of Metcon.
I'll make a motion.
Second.
A motion by Dan Rudd, second by Dale Busch, to award the contract for the TCU Montgomery Building Project to Metcon Construction Incorporated of Fairbowl, Minnesota. All those in favor?
Aye.
Those opposed? Motion is passed, five-zero. Uh, next we have our eighteen-nineteen overnight field trips.
Uh, Mr. Johnson, our activities director, will be, uh, sharing this overview.
Um, these two things I was apparently supposed to, uh, have brought to you in September, so I apologize for missing that deadline. Um, the first one, overnight trips, as you see the list here, um, I took the previous list and just went and confirmed with the advisors and the groups that we had that we were still doing these, so as you can see, this group, everything here is the same. Um, nothing has been added, and I will, as we progress through the year, if things do come, I will make sure and add it to this list. But I reached out to these individuals and confirmed that it was, some of them, they don't necessarily always go to, it depends if they qualify for it. But generally speaking, this is the list that we've had in the past and should be up to date as of our knowledge today.
All right, I'll seek a motion.
I'll make a motion.
Second. I have a motion by Ashley Brucino, second by Michelle Borcher, to approve the eighteen-nineteen overnight field trips. All those in favor?
Aye.
Those opposed? Motion is passed, five-zero. Next we have our fundraisers.
Fundraising, kinda the same thing. There has been a few added to this list. Uh, if you're looking through the BPA Robotics, um, is one of them that has added a, uh, a fundraiser. They do a sponsorship more than, uh, just going out and, um, selling something. Uh, the cheerleading did a, a lollipop sale this year, so that is additional one. The dance, if you look on, on there, it says cheesecake, and that was, uh, I did not allow them to do that this year. They asked for it, and um, it was a really short window. I wanted to make sure that, uh, we were okay, so I, I got ahold of, um, Diane's in the center to make sure that they didn't feel like we were doing something going against their business, and they assured me that they had no problem if we do it. They sell, they are wholesale sellers. They said it would not affect our business whatsoever. So we have told the dance they could do that next year if they choose to, but, um, the timeframe didn't work out for this year. And then, uh, the very last one, if you look in the bottom of the second page, um, we have a pretty fantastic new owner of the golf course this year. He's, uh, he was great for working cross-country meets this year. We are gonna add, um, obviously, we'll have some golf meets out there this year, but he's trying to get a little interest in it, helping our, our program. He's gonna put a golf cart out on one of the, uh, um, water hazards, and people are going to bid on when that thing, that thing's gonna fall through, and it's gonna benefit our, our team, so they're not going out and selling anything. Um, those are the four additions. There are a few, uh, a few items that we did this year. Our, um, I know we wanna try to defer going out and going door-to-door and selling stuff, so we had some kids go work at a pancake, uh, event here in town. We had some go work at a steak fry in, um, La Center. Those things they worked at and earned money for their groups, so they were, were trying to shift a little bit more of less going out and selling stuff that none of us, selling stuff that we, uh, don't necessarily need maybe, and, uh, and asking for donations. We're trying to find more opportunities to work and, uh, do those things to help our club, so. Those are the four that have been added to the, the list that I was given as of last year, and, uh, some of them aren't, some of them are not being repeated every year. For example, the German club does not do the quilts every year, but they didn't wanna take it off cause they do it sporadically, so they wanna make sure it stayed on the list. Questions on that fundraiser list?
I'm just curious. It's fine that you decided the cheesecake thing, but what's the criteria? Like, what, why was the timing just too many things close together?
Actually, uh, our, our dance coaches are, are new. They kinda got going, and they decided they wanted more money. Um, our numbers, our numbers have increased, so they went out and found one. I just, they said, we need to do this in two weeks. It was, uh, just such a small window at the time, so.
I didn't know if there was a certain number you allowed, like per season?
No, it really, it really wasn't anything was that. It was this, they got to it late, and, uh, I just wanted to make sure that I'm still trying to figure out all the businesses in these three towns, and
Sure, was well thought out.
That was one we knew, uh, could possibly be a conflict, so we just wanted to check.
Got it.
Hey, I'll take a motion.
So move.
Second. A motion by Dale Busch, second by Michelle Borcher, to approve the eighteen-nineteen, uh, school fundraisers. All those in favor?
Aye.
Those opposed? Motion is passed, five-zero.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Yep.
Uh, next we have the resolution for canvassing the return of votes for the school district general election.
Yeah?
I, I don't have the resolution. I just have all the results, um, by area, so go ahead with the resolution. If there's other questions, I can maybe do a little backfill on information.
Resolution, canvassing returns of votes of school district general election, be resolved by the school board of independent school district number two-nine-zero-five as follows. It, it is hereby found, determined, and declared that the general election of the voters of district two-nine-zero-five held on November sixth, two thousand eighteen was in all respects duly and legally called and held. As specified in the attached abstract, in return of votes cast, the district voted and said election, on the election of three school board members for four. That's wrong. It's, yes, should be for four school board members for four-year term vacancies on the board caused by expiration of term on January first, next following the general election as follows. Dale Busch, three thousand one hundred fifty-seven, Marcia Fronik, three thousand one hundred forty-two, Michelle Borchart, three thousand seventy-two, Joshua Belkey, two thousand seven hundred fifty-one. Dale Busch, Marcia Fronik, Michelle Borchart, Joshua Belkey, having received the highest number of votes, are elected to four-year terms beginning January first, two thousand nineteen. The school district clerk is hereby authorized to certify the results of the election to the county auditor of each in which the school district is located in whole or in part. Abstract of Le Sueur and Rice County result, results are available in the Tri-City United School District's office. The motion for the adoption of the foregoing resolution was duly seconded, I should have read that. So, that's the resolution.
I'll take a second on that, though.
Sure, I'll second it.
Do you have anything you wanna add?
Um, I think just something of note, um, you know, there's, as we heard across the state, uh, there was a really high voter turnout for this election. Um, doing some, uh, calculations, as, uh, the number of persons who were registered as of seven AM that morning were thirteen thousand three hundred and sixty-eight. So that would be of our entire district. Uh, they had five hundred and thirty-eight registered on election day. Um, there were, uh, right absentee and, and military and overseas ballots by, um, one thousand six hundred and fifty-two. And so the total number of persons voting was ten thousand forty-four, which puts us pretty close to eighty percent. That's, that's a huge voter turnout, and, um, yeah. Just a, a strong message that people are taking their, um, their citizenship very seriously and, and being engaged. So, yeah, we do have the full breakdown and everything like that, if any- You do have the full breakdown and everything like that if anyone were wanting to see it. And it'll also be, I'm sure, on the Secretary of State's website, so.
All right, I have a motion on the floor by Dan Rudd, second by Ashley Briseval to approve the resolution canvassing the return of votes of the school district general election. Um, this will be a roll call vote. Dale?
Yes.
Ashley?
Yes.
Michelle?
Yes.
Diane?
Yes.
And myself would be a yes. Resolution is passed. Um, next, seek a motion to adjourn the meeting.
I'll make a motion.
I'll second.
Motion by Dan Rudd, second by Michelle Borchett to adjourn the meeting at seven fifty-two PM. All those in favor? Those opposed? Motion is passed, five-zero. Meeting is adjourned.